So, members of the Board of Trustees, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson William C. Thompson, Jr., Trustee Michael Arvinides, Trustee Henry Berger,
Present.
Trustee Una Clark, Trustee Lorraine Cortez-Vasquez,
Present.
Trustee Fernando Ferrer,
Here.
Trustee Kevin Kim,
Present.
Trustee Myra Lenaras-Garcia,
Present.
Trustee Robert Mojica,
Present.
Trustee Brian Oberfeld,
Present.
Trustee Armenia Palacio,
Present.
Trustee Jill O'Donnell Torme is absent and excused. Trustee Ken Sunshine,
Present.
Trustee Angelo Vivalo,
Present.
Trustee Sandra Wilken,
Present.
Trustee Martin Burke,
Present.
And Trustee Giovanni Picon.
Present.
Okay, you have a quorum, Bill. We lose you?
No, this public meeting of the City University of New York's Board of Trustees is now called to order. Gail, I believe we're back to you.
Yep, pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension and the suspension of required meetings under the Open Meetings Law, this meeting is being held remotely via video conference with access to the public session available on the CUNY Board of Trustees website, as well as live on the trustees' website. A copy of the calendar agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting, and as a reminder, please mute so we can ensure that everyone can hear. I will now take a roll call attendance for members of the Chancellery. Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Felix Matos Rodriguez,
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis,
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemons,
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista,
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement, and Special Counsel Glenda Grace,
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Matthew Sapienza,
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pamela Silverblatt,
Present.
Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Brian Cohen,
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing Maite Umpo,
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Risk Audit and Compliance Richard White. Vice Chancellor of Human Resources Management Dorian Gloria,
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor for University Advancement Andrea Shapiro-Davis,
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank.
Okay, um, let me start out first by making everybody aware that our student member Giovanni Picon, this is her last meeting, and I will say, and it was something that she had mentioned before, or someone else had mentioned, it's been a little strange, there are people who have never met her in person, because during her tenure, we've been doing everything, you know, virtually. I've had the pleasure, as a few of my other, as some of my other colleagues have had, of meeting her in person. And we have a resolution and other great things to say about her later, but I will miss her. She has added to this board, she has made us better. She has raised issues that have enlightened all of us, and I think we have done over the year that she's been on this board, in spite of COVID, in spite of the problems that we've run into, the difficulties, we've done some great things, and she's been a part of those. So, it's, I will miss her. I know that, and as I said, we'll have some things to say, some nice things to say about her later. I know that I saw him a minute ago, the, I'm going to introduce what will be part of the board at the next meeting, Corey Provost, who's the Vice Chair for Legislative Affairs for the University Student Senate. He'll be serving as the interim chairperson for the University Student Senate until a new chairperson is elected, pending an election. So, he will be joining us at the next, at the next meeting as a member. After two rounds of voting at a recent University Student Senate meeting, a chairperson wasn't selected. It is not as if he comes to this board without experience. Mr. Provost, who's a third-year student at CUNY Law, is, has formally served as the USS Chair and as the Student Trustee from 2009 until 2011. So, he comes to this board with experience. It isn't as if the people and a number of the members of the board may be different, but then again, so many things are the same. So, we'll be able to welcome him formally at our next meeting as he joins us. But I'd like to take, to get a little bit of a jump, and just to welcome him, I don't see him, as I said, I hope he's still on, I saw him at the beginning, but let me, ahead of the next meeting, welcome him, I will do so formally at the next meeting. And as I pointed out, later in the meeting, we're going to have the opportunity to give a proper tribute to Giovanni when we vote on a resolution of appreciation for all of the incredible work she's done during this extraordinary time. In the meantime, trustees have been busy throughout the summer with the important work of search committees for CUNY Law, a new university provost, and a vice chancellor for university advancement. The chancellor is also about to charge committees for three more searches, I know everybody's thrilled to hear that, for the New Martha School of Journalism, Macaulay Honors College, and the School of Professional Studies. I can't thank all of you, my colleagues, enough for the hard work that you do. You know, I think everybody's salary will be doubled for all the extra work that we've done. But it is a hugely vital task for the university in these search committees. I'd like to thank all of you, my colleagues, for your participation on those search committees. Pursuant to the New York State Legislature's recent extension of the suspension of required in-person meetings under the Open Meetings Law, the Office of the Secretary, the CUNY Board of Trustees, accepted written testimony, statements in video from concerned individuals through email at hearings@cuni.edu and Dropbox. Video submissions were compiled and streamed live on October 18th, 2021, at 4:30 PM on the Board of Trustees' website. A total of 44 written submissions and 29 testimonial videos were submitted. Testimony included faculty, students, and CSI staff members who expressed concern for the proposed changes to CSI's governance plan. Their concerns revolve around faculty, HEO, and student involvement in decision-making at CSI, which they argue will be diminished because of the changes. Faculty also expressed concern regarding their role as head of college committees. Members of the CUNY PSC expressed support for the 2022-2023 budget and urged the board to support the PSC's New Deal for CUNY Plan that would increase state funding for CUNY, lift the hiring freeze to hire more faculty and mental health counselors, decreasing class sizes, free tuition, and increased funding infrastructure projects and maintenance. Faculty also advocated for restoring community college cuts and increasing funding for CUNY community colleges. Faculty, staff, and students at Hunter College School of Nursing raised concerns about ongoing infrastructure issues and the need to fully fund and build the nursing school building next to the new Memorial Sloan-Kettering facility on 74th Street. Testimonies are always available for review in the Office of the Secretary. The Office of the Secretary has also posted on the Board of Trustees' website all of the testimony submitted since March of 2020. That concludes my report. Let's now go to Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for his comments and the chancellor's report.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. It's great to convene again. The timing of today's meeting forced the opportunity to reflect with some perspective on the exciting and safe return to campus that we have experienced for the start of the fall semester. Before I begin, I want to take a few moments to acknowledge some significant recent losses to the CUNY family, particularly that of the ever-proud City College alumnus and former Secretary of State, General Colin L. Powell. I echo all the sentiments that many members of the CUNY community have expressed regarding the passing of General Powell. I also want to acknowledge the loss of decorated physicist Miriam Saratic, former Ostos Community College president Candido Antonio de Leon, and highly esteemed philosopher Charles W. Mills. All pioneers who broke racial and gender barriers. They were leaders and mentors who enriched and elevated the people they met. Generations of CUNY students have benefited greatly from their interest in this university. We thank them for their service to this country, to the fields of science and philosophy, and to CUNY, and our condolences go to their families and loved ones. It is hard to believe that we're almost midway in the fall semester. CUNY's decision to fully open its campuses for the fall, for the first time in 17 months, has been supported by safety protocols that included weekly testing for unvaccinated students, faculty, and staff who visit a campus for any reason. I am also extremely proud of sharing that CUNY has been a giant in the city's efforts to get New Yorkers vaccinated. Of the over 6 million New Yorkers already vaccinated, over half a million got their shot at a CUNY campus. One out of every 12 vaccinated New Yorkers got their shot at a CUNY campus. Thank you to all the staff on the campuses that worked so hard to make these vaccination sites open to all New Yorkers. As you know, CUNY is providing onsite testing throughout the university. The program was launched in August. The CUNY testing program enables us to identify unvaccinated individuals who are positive for COVID-19 before they enter a CUNY campus, and importantly, to track overall infection rates. The effort has been crucial to a successful reopening of our campuses this fall. We are providing weekly test results online in our CUNY COVID-19 safety tracker. I am happy to report that the numbers reveal a university that is operating generally free of the virus. Since classes on most of our campuses began on the week of August 25th, we have tested 64,979 people through October 24th and recorded only 152 positive cases, a total that amounts to only 2/10 of a percent. Another 234 positives have been reported by people who tested for reasons other than entering a CUNY campus and self-reported their results to us. These numbers have been considerably lower than the city and statewide figures. As part of our ongoing effort to support our students during the health crisis, over the summer, we launched the CUNY Comeback Program. And so far, we have been able to erase debt for approximately 52,000 students who owe more than $95 million to the university. Those numbers are expected to increase after the colleges finish reviewing applications for students whose debt to CUNY was not automatically clear, but who might be eligible to receive debt forgiveness under the hardship, under hardship. We also lifted financial holes for approximately 74,000 students impacted by the pandemic and released transcripts for 3,166 students who requested them. We will soon begin the process of dispersing a third round of student relief grants through the President Biden's American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA. We intend to disperse around $240 million of student emergency grants this fall and another $160 million in the spring semester. I would like to briefly turn to enrollment figures, which continue to reflect downward trends across the country as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. Preliminary but almost final figures show that CUNY's fall 2021 enrollment declined by 7.9% compared to last fall, a drop that is driven by a 15.3 reduction in community college enrollment. To put those numbers in context, in the eight years prior to the pandemic, CUNY's overall enrollment held virtually unchanged. During the eight years prior to the pandemic, the enrollment of our four-year colleges actually increased by 2.9%, while the community college declined during those years by 6.1%. And here are the key takeaways from this comparison. Enrollment figures for the last two years, in particular for community college, seem to be pandemic-related and consistent with nationwide trends. We will continue to focus our efforts, like we have done for the past year, on bringing back students and recruiting new ones, particularly those who traditionally attend our community colleges. Thanks to CUNY Professor Paul Otwell from the Graduate Center, who has begun to examine who are the students that we have lost in the pandemic so we can better understand the work ahead. His research found, and I quote, "The most consequential impact of the pandemic on college enrollments has occurred where recent high school graduates have postponed or abandoned plans for college entry." This is most common among less academically prepared and low-income students. Already enrolled students have largely weathered the COVID disruptions despite considerable psychological and financial stresses." End of quote. I would now like to change gears and mention two updates for exciting, to exciting academic updates. Last month, we announced plans to launch a graduate education task force, kicking off a two-year process to reimagine and reinvigorate our graduate programs. Thanks to President Garrell from the Graduate Center and Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Dan Lemons for co-chairing this important task force. Earlier this month, CUNY was named to a prestigious new national consortium that aims to improve academic opportunities for Latinx scholars in the humanities. The consortium, directed by the University of Illinois Chicago and funded by a three-year, $5 million grant from the Mellon Foundation, will prepare, support, and mentor Latino students who are pursuing advanced degrees and faculty positions in the humanities. Now, to career engagement, as you know, one of my key priorities. It is my pleasure to welcome Lauren Anderson to our community as CUNY's interim University Dean of Industry and Talent Partnerships. She started in July and has hit the ground running with several announcements that have added to CUNY's success in developing talent pipelines to New York's employers. Some of the initiatives that we're most excited about include the CUNY Futures in Finance, our partnership with Centerbridge, Bloomberg, and Goldman Sachs to train CUNY students for careers in the financial industry. The 6 million expansion of Blackstone's Launchpad Skill Building Entrepreneurial Program to nine CUNY colleges, and the CUNY Recovery Corps, which connected 4,000 CUNY students to 19 colleges to paid internships at small businesses and community-based organizations this past summer through a partnership with New York City. I would like to update you on several other partnerships that are, that promise to expand CUNY's footprint in the city. Last month, we announced the opening of a DNA Learning Center in New York City in collaboration with Skullspring Harbor Laboratory at City Tech that will expand lab-based STEM learning in biology and genetics to over 30,000 middle, high school, and CUNY students at a new 18,000-square-foot facility. CUNY was also proud to announce earlier this month the largest grant ever bestowed by the National Science Foundation to CUNY in the amount of $15 million to lead a coalition of local colleges in providing entrepreneurial training to local academic researchers. We also announced another general's grant from the New York State Education Department to fund the My Brothers Keeper's Teacher Opportunity Corps Part II to increase the number of racial and ethnic minorities in teaching careers. Now, let me go to the lightning round. Throughout the first two quarters of the state's fiscal year, our total NWBE spending has exceeded $20 million. In total, we spent $20.5 million on NWBE vendors, which is about a 25% increase over what we spent at midpoint in each of the last two fiscal years. The latest Wall Street Journal Times Higher Education ranking singled out City College and Baruch, naming them first and second, respectively, among the nation's best value colleges. Forbes named four of our colleges among the top 25% of America's top colleges, and US News named six CUNY colleges among the top 20 universities in the northern United States. The Princeton Review and Washington Monthly also recognize the quality and value of our schools. Now, following the statement the chairman about this being the last meeting of our student trustee Giovanni Picon, I would like for you to indulge me as we share a short tribute that we put together to bid farewell to trustee Picon, whose term will end before our next meeting. So, I understand somebody's going to work some video magic now. Hi, Giovanni. I just wanted to take a moment to say thank you. Much gracias. Thank you for your advocacy, your ideas, and your dedication. I hope that all of our students know just how much you have fought for them and their needs. You represent everything that CUNY stands for with your family serving as the perfect example of how a multi-generational family of CUNY alumni can make our city and our world a better place. We know you'll never stop fighting for the things you believe in, and we look forward to seeing your continued accomplishments. On behalf of the entire CUNY family, thank you, Giovanni. It has been a privilege to work with you. Muchisimas gracias, and the best of luck for you in the future. And I know that we'll continue to celebrate Giovanni with a resolution later in the meeting, so Giovanni, we thank you again, and here's to a future that is brimming with potential and promise. We will miss you. Finally, as we look ahead to next week's general election and to ascendancy of new voices in city leadership, we also acknowledge and welcome New York's first woman governor, Kathy Hochul, and thank her for recognizing the transformative power of CUNY and higher education. I look forward to continuing our important work together to rebuild New York equitably and inclusively. And that, Mr. Chair, concludes my report.
Thank you, chancellor. Let's now turn to the items requiring a vote today. Given that board members are participating remotely, and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, I'll read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if you'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over each other. For clarity and coordination, I'll ask the secretary to read all of the items. Okay, and away we go.
All right. Item number one is the approval of minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of July 6, 2021.
May I have a second for this?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number two is the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Item 2A is a resolution to authorize a contract with Cone Inc. for escalator maintenance services at Baruch College. Baruch College requires full escalator maintenance services for all 10 escalators located at 55 Lexington Avenue. Maintenance services include all inspections, adjustments, tests, parts, replacement, and repairs necessary to keep the escalators continuously used at their initial performance ability. University is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Cone Inc. in the amount of $1,096,250 over a five-year period.
May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Any discussion on this item? Questions? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item number 2B is a resolution to authorize a contract with Dreamland Security Services to provide unarmed guard services at Kingsborough Community College. Kingsborough Community College requires unarmed guard service for its 70-acre campus to supplement its campus peace officer staff. The proposed agreement with Dreamland Security Services, a New York State and New York City certified minority-owned and locally-operated security guard services provider, will ensure that the college has enough officers to staff posts, which is critical to the health and safety of its students, staff, and faculty. University is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Dreamland Security Services, Inc. in the amount of $3 million over a period, a five-year period.
May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Any discussion on the item? Any questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Okay, item number 2C is a resolution to authorize a contract with Violia ES Technical Solutions LLC to manage CUNY's hazardous waste and emergency response needs. The university is required by the Resource Conservation and Recovery Act and other local, state, and federal laws to properly manage and remove hazardous waste generated on-site. Failure to remain compliant with hazardous waste disposal can lead to public corrective act penalties and fines from the United States Environmental Protection Agency and the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. University is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Violia ES Technical Solutions LLC in the amount of $7,122,414 over a five-year period. This vendor will assist the university to stay compliant and provide the best management practices related to waste disposal.
May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 2D is a resolution to authorize a contract extension with Admissions US LLC. University requires a customer relationship management, or CRM, tool to manage communications, track interactions, streamline complex processes, and ensure continuity of student services across various units on campuses throughout the enrollment lifecycle from admissions through graduation. University currently has a subscription with Admissions US LLC to provide these services, which expired on October 14th, 2021. University would like to renew the subscription with Admissions US LLC for two years. A competitive solicitation process is currently underway to award a new multi-year contract for customer relationship management, subscription software, and related services. University is seeking approval from the Board of Trustees to authorize a contract with Admissions US LLC in the amount of $3,200,000 over a two-year period.
May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Is there any discussion or questions on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 2E is a resolution to authorize the Other Eligible Uses component of the university's federal stimulus allocation plan. CUNY's colleges are the recipients of federal stimulus funding. The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, CRESSA, and the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA, are federal funding sources that are available to help partially offset the financial hardship brought on by the pandemic. In July 2021, the Board of Trustees approved the university's plan to utilize the CRESSA and ARPA funds in fiscal years 2021, 2022, and 2023. These plans included specific uses for student support and retention, reopening revenue loss, mental health services, online program development, faculty professional development, and other eligible uses. As part of the annual financial planning process, the colleges were required to develop a plan for $385.8 million for the Other Eligible Uses category of the CRESSA and ARPA funds. University is requesting the Board of Trustees to approve the college plans for the Other Eligible Uses category of the CRESSA and ARPA funds.
May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Are there any discussion or questions on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item number 2F is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget request. University fiscal University fiscal year 2022-2023 budget request was designed to keep the university's strength and resiliency at the forefront and to depict the university's role in the state's and the city's efforts to respond to the COVID-19 pandemic and jumpstart New York's economic resurgence. The university continues its public service mission by expanding workforce training and helping address societal inequities, creating access to economic opportunities for all. University is seeking the Board of Trustees' approval of the fiscal year 2022-2023 budget request. This document requests additional operating funds of $313, sorry, $313.3 million from New York State and $103 million from New York City as an investment in the university to assist the state and the city in rebuilding the New York economy. In addition, the university is also requesting $1.247 billion for capital projects to provide up-to-date facilities to further our mission as part of a five-year capital plan totaling $5.675 billion.
May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Discussion, I believe Chancellor, you wanted to say a few things?
Thank you, Chair, for the opportunity to contextualize and present the budget request. When the board entrusted me the leadership of the university, we're all looking forward to moving CUNY to become a bolder and better institution. COVID forced a brutal parenthesis on that move forward, even while we made significant progress on several fronts. The budget proposal before you begins to move us back to the path towards the university that we aspire, a university focused on student success, particularly with the retention of our students with mental health and other student wellness services, and more full-time faculty. Excited about the important research our faculty produce that directly impacts the quality of life of New Yorkers. Committed to being the best partner the business, governmental, and nonprofit communities can have to make New York City come back from its current economic malaise. Increasing the availability and quality of our online instruction and working with K-12 institutions to improve college readiness and serving adult learners who might have been displaced during the pandemic. This proposal, it's also a direct response to many other charges we have received from this Board of Trustees, reducing our reliance on active faculty, repairing our students better to engage the world of work and careers in order to achieve social mobility, and prioritizing the optimization of our human, physical, and operational assets. There is still plenty to do, but I'm convinced that these are the right investments to respond to our sure vision of a better and bolder CUNY. The budget request also helps to protect the university from some of the challenges that we face. On the enrollment side, we know that investments in full-time faculty, improved teaching, additional mental health and wellness support, and enhanced career services all translate into increased retention, which is an often neglected side of the enrollment conversations. We also know that investments in our work with K-12 and college readiness translate into improved enrollment. We also need to invest to protect our campuses from the effects of climate change, storms, floods, extreme temperatures on their infrastructure. With almost half of our three hundred buildings being over fifty years old, we need to refurbish our aging infrastructure. I want to add that I am particularly excited about our capital requests, which includes a robust multi-year capital project investment plan in order to modernize our facilities and increase our capacity to better serve our students. Our request also includes the need to update our technology in both the classroom and administratively. We are requesting funding to help our colleges address the need for more smart classrooms and digital technology upgrades. In addition, we are seeking funds to transform our main IT system, CUNY First, to a modern cloud-based architecture in order to improve its agility, empower users, and provide access to software vendors' latest enhancements, innovations, and long-term benefits. We're also requesting funding for several exciting new capital projects that would allow our campuses to have the modern, updated facilities that our students need in order to translate their knowledge into the New York City workforce. They are also the facilities that our campus communities deserve. The new capital projects also signal two important things. Investments in communities where the new construction would be part of a larger economic development effort and investments in so our campuses have now benefited from new buildings in over three decades. Two examples of these innovative projects include York's College Academic Commons Projects in Jamaica, Queens, and Ostos Community College Alley Health and Sciences Complex in the South Bronx. We are also very proud that we have not included increases in tuition and fees on this budget request in recognition of the financial hardships our students and families are suffering as a result of COVID. This is the third year in a row for four-year colleges and the seventh year in a row for community colleges without such increases. But that also means that some of the resources that could have come from additional tuition must come from other sources and funding partners. Rebuilding the more equitable and prosperous New York that we all aspire requires support for CUNY. In the aftermath of the ongoing COVID disruption, a major opportunity has emerged to reimagine how urban public higher education can serve the underserved, uplift the vulnerable, help build a more just and equitable society, and fuel the recovery from this terrible pandemic. This request is consistent with those aspirations and values, and I hope it receives your support. Thank you.
Thank you Chancellor, was... I see that we have on the screen the presentation, and I guess it's Matt's screen?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you Chancellor. Part of the documents that were provided as with the resolution for tonight's budget request was the actual budget request document itself and this presentation. And so I'm going to take you through the presentation, which will summarize the request document. And thanks to the Chancellor's excellent introduction to the request and description of the vision for the request. I'm going to skip some of these preliminary slides, given the late hour as well, and get right into the numbers. And we'll start with the operating request, and then we'll go on to the capital request. But the thing for both is the Chancellor described, there's a similar vision across both operating and capital. So on operating, these are our main funding sources for the operating budget. You see the current year's budget fiscal '22 enacted is just about $3.8 billion, and you could see the sources of funding there.
Matt, I think you'd like to advance the screen.
Oh, can you guys not see my screen?
We can see your screen, but only the first page.
Oh, okay. Let's try again. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
It's okay.
But now.
There you go.
Okay, sorry about that, but thank you. So on the operating side, we have $3.8 billion for the current year, broken out by our funding sources. As the Chancellor mentioned, we are seeking $416 million in additional operating support, which would bring our budget up to $4.2 billion. A sixteen percent increase in state support, a twenty percent increase in city support. And as the Chancellor mentioned, we are recommending that tuition remain flat for next year. And so overall, it's an eleven percent increase in our operating budget. Another way to look at these numbers is to look at it between senior colleges and community colleges. $295 million at the senior colleges and $121 million at the community colleges. And another way that we look at the request is programmatic initiatives and mandatory needs. Programmatic initiatives are those programs that we currently have that we want to enhance or new programs that we want to implement. Mandatory needs are the cost of doing business just going up. So mandatory needs, $191 million, programmatic initiatives, $225. We want to spend more of our time discussing the programmatic initiatives, but first, let's start with the mandatory needs of $191 million. You see there that the largest amount by far is that first item. Fringe benefits are almost $113 million in additional costs. Fringe benefits is almost a billion-dollar account. We have a $3.8 billion operating budget, and fringe benefits runs between $900 million and $1 billion a year, so it's a very big amount. And the increases are usually the largest mandatory cost need that we have. So programmatic initiatives, these four main areas of investment, first being student success, the second being workforce development and advancing social mobility, third, student well-being, and fourth, optimizing infrastructure. And we'll unpack each of these now. So student success, as the Chancellor mentioned, we are looking to recruit 1,075 new full-time faculty lines. The largest component of this is we are seeking 500 of these lines to be lecturer lines, which we feel we can get better efficiency and better teaching capacity from the lecturers and also open up an avenue of opportunity to our current adjuncts to move into those lecture lines. We know that teaching and learning has changed as a result of the pandemic, the way students learn and the way faculty teach. And so our Office of Academic Affairs wants to work with our college to implement new pedagogical innovations. This request seeks to strengthen and invest in CUNY's master's and doctoral programs so that we can add additional faculty to those programs so that we could develop more online offerings in both master's and doctoral programs and to increase the amount of site pens that our doctoral students earn every year in order to be more competitive here in New York. The state of New York for the last several years has provided $4 million in online educational resources, which we refer to as OER, which allows students to obtain their textbooks and other course materials electronically and very inexpensively. This has been an incredibly successful program, and we're very grateful for the state for providing funding. And in this request, we're looking for the city to match that $4 million so that we can roll this out to the community colleges as well. The New York City Department of Ed is our partners on so many, in so many different ways. And so we have a lot of terrific programs with them, whether it's College Now, P-Tech Schools, the CUNY Two Decor. And we're looking to expand that roster in this request. And then lastly, on student success, serving adult learners. Data shows that there's about a million New Yorkers who have some college degree, some college credits, I should say, but no degree. And so we want to do what we can to get those adult learners back into CUNY. And not only get them back, but when they're back, be able to provide them the supports so that they can be on a successful path to a degree. Second area, workforce development and advancing social mobility, something that the Chancellor has talked a lot about in the two years that he's been the Chancellor. We want to strengthen those connections with private industry partners. We've been able to announce a lot of terrific partnerships over the last couple of years, Bloomberg and Goldman Sachs, just among two of them. And so we want to build more and strengthen these. We want to be able to create more internship opportunities for our students. This not only helps our students when they get their degree and they're ready to go on to the workplace that they have this experience, but also to provide them with the resources to help pay for college as well. Our request also for the community colleges is looking to grow applied associate degree programs. These are AAS degrees. And these are programs in specific fields in which students get their AAS degree, their associate degree, and go right out into the workforce. So we know that most of our associate degree students will graduate and then go on to seek a bachelor's degree, but we need to create more of these programs, and we're seeking funding for it to work with industry to give them the workforce opportunities and the workforce and the opportunities for our students right away. And then lastly, we have terrific career centers at all of our campuses, but we need additional funding in order to staff them better so that they can have longer hours and serve our students better. Third area, student well-being. We know that this request, we're recommending a tuition and fee freeze for next year, but we know that there's so many other financial obstacles that our students are facing, especially now, given the public health crisis, housing, food insecurity, travel costs. And so we're looking to eliminate those obstacles. Similar to what I just described on career centers, we're looking to expand our childcare centers on campuses. We have seventeen, and again, we want it to be open for longer hours and be better staffed. Similarly, the Campus Health Services Center for the physical health of our students. And then lastly, we want to continue the expansion of mental health service offerings to our students. We've been able to use federal stimulus funds in each of the last two years, $5 million a year. The state this year, we're very grateful, provided a $1 million allocation for mental health. But we know the federal stimulus funds are going to go away once we expend them. And so we're looking for the state and city to provide a more permanent funding source for mental health services to our students. Last category of operating budget is optimizing infrastructure. We have a need for regular maintenance and enhancements, those day-to-day repairs and services that our facilities need through the operating budget. We need to strengthen those. Unfortunately, whenever we have budget cuts, this is the area that usually gets cut the most. And so we need to reinvest in that area. This request also seeks additional funding for Gutman Community College to have additional leased space. The college has been in leased space since it began. They are maxed out in terms of their enrollment, and they really can't grow their enrollment at the clip that they would like because of their constraints on space. And so we're looking for temporary additional leased space so they can grow their enrollment until a permanent solution for Gutman is resolved down the road. We want to invest, be able to have funding to invest in sustainability initiatives that will help not only reduce our carbon footprint, but also reduce our energy usage and create savings in future years. And then we're looking to establish an emergency response team here at the university. Whenever we've had emergencies, whether it's weather-related or other emergencies, whether it's a fire or things like that, we usually have to contract out that type of work because we don't have the staff and equipment needs. So that not only costs us additional money, but it also costs our campuses time. And so if we had an emergency response team that can go out to campus to campus and be ready on a moment's notice to respond, that would be a great benefit to our campuses. This slide, as the Chancellor mentioned earlier in his report about the enrollment challenge that we've had as a result of the pandemic, we wanted to be able to show that the investments that we're asking for in this budget request directly support retention of our current students and recruitment of new students. So whether it's additional full-time faculty, so we can give more course offerings to our students, whether it's additional internship opportunities or childcare centers being open at longer hours or additional mental health services, all of these things are with an eye towards increasing support for our students to better increase retention and recruitment of new students. So let's go on to the capital budget request. And again, the strategic vision is very similar to the operating budget, student success, optimizing infrastructure, sustainability. And on the capital side, we're looking for investments to help with our pandemic response. So just a quick overview of capital needs in that box on the left-hand side is in red for a reason, which is that we have about 300 buildings within the university, and about half of them are more than fifty years old. So we have a very aged building stock, and that really underpins every discussion that we have about the capital budget and about facilities. We have about 28 million square feet of space that needs a state of, needs to be brought up to state of good repair. And we have many different unique types of spaces. We have classrooms, we have labs, libraries, athletic fields. We have research facilities that have very high-end equipment that needs to be expanded and maintained. As the Chancellor mentioned, we're also looking to use the capital budget to be able to replace and enhance our existing IT systems. And also, as the Chancellor mentioned, we're of course looking for new buildings to increase capacity to better serve our students. So in terms of the numbers for the capital budget, we're looking for $1.2 billion in additional funding for fiscal '23, which is part of a $5.7 billion capital plan. And you can see on the chart, it's broken out by senior colleges and community colleges. Senior colleges, we're seeking a little less than $1 billion. Community colleges, a little bit more than $250 million. And similar to the operating budget, we break this out by what we call capital renewal, which is the day-to-day operating and And similar to the operating budget, we break this out by what we call capital renewal, which is the the day to day operating and and maintenance initiatives at our campuses and then strategic initiatives, which would be for those new buildings. So on capital renewal, as we talked about, we're looking um for funding to uh for in information technology initiatives to bring us to cloud based solutions. Four million dollars for additional smart classrooms and to enhance digital technology for instruction. Fifty two million dollars for science lab upgrades. And then the other three items are really directly related to pandemic response. We contracted that with a vendor to look at our H V A C systems, and from that report, um, we have learned that we need some upgrades there, and so we're looking for twenty six million dollars for that. Similarly, we're seeking twenty million dollars for window replacements, which again will help with air quality and also energy costs. And then ten million for emergency equipment to help with the emergency response team that we're seeking through the operating budget. And then on the capital strategic initiatives, these are just some of the strategic initiatives that we have. Um, and the chancellor mentioned some of these, York College and Hostess Community College, which both haven't had a new building in in decades. Hunter College, which the chairman mentioned when he was talking about the public hearing that um that folks came at last week's public hearing to to um give support for that project. The Medgar Evers Academic Success Center we're seeking funding for as well. Brooklyn College Roosevelt Hall is an existing building, but it's very old and needs to be renovated. And in Gutman Community Colleges, we mentioned, we're looking for a permanent new home for Gutman as to get them out of their lease facility and any new leases that we get and get them into a permanent home, and we're seeking hundred seventy five million dollars for that. So I I thank you for your time. I I thank the chancellor and our chief operating officer, Acta Batista for their vision and their guidance through this process, and I also want to thank Kathy Vaughn and Gwen Perlman and their teams for the terrific work that they did in crafting this request. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Matt. Uh, questions? Questions, comments?
First, Steve has a comment.
Yes.
Um, well, I think this budget request is, of course, a larger budget request we've seen in the previous years um at our university, and I think we are in a pivotal moment where post pandemic era of trying to recover back into New York City, but the City University of New York, and I think it truly reflects the needs of what we need, and it's very bold, and I think this is the moment for CUNY to be bold in asking for what we need and ensuring the students have those resources. And we've seen that with the work that we've done with the CUNY Comeback Program. The support that we've been giving our students, and if we just receive a little bit more from the city and the state, I can just imagine what we can do. Um, and I'm very pleased, you know, to vote for this budget request. Usually the student trustee, we we are never satisfied with what's proposed, but I'm glad that it's a historic time where I can support such a budget request that is robust, that is bold, and it represents the people of the City University of New York.
Any other questions? Any other questions? All right, we'll now vote. Uh, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose.
Well, he could will abstain.
Any other abstentions or oppositions? All right, this uh and 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 let the record note that this is with the student member voting yes, that that this this item is approved.
And trustee Clark has joined us as well, just for the record as well. So item number three, Committee of Academic Policy Programs and Research Activities. Item number three A is a resolution regarding the awarding of an honorary degree by Hunter College to Ms. Joan Hanson Grave at the January twenty twenty two commencement. Joan Hanson Grave has rendered nearly lifelong service to Hunter College in CUNY. Ms. Grave has been instrumental in transforming the Hunter College School of Nursing and providing support for hundreds of students through her generous endowment of the Grave Deanship in the School of Nursing, the Grave Nursing Scholarship at Hunter's Mother Days, Mother's Day Scholarship Fund. She has also demonstrated civic engagement and dedication to her community through her volunteer work, including serving as a member of the Allocations Council and the Campaign Cabinet of the United Way. Ms. Grave has served on the Hunter College Board of Trustees since two thousand and eight and is a past chair and vice chair of the board, as well as the founding chair of the advisory board to the Hunter College School of Nursing.
May I have a second for this item?
Second, Alasia.
Uh, is any discussion or questions on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item three B is a resolution regarding the approval of the actions in the CAPRA Dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. In summary form introduced in October twenty nineteen, the CAPRA Dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data.
They have a second for this item.
Second.
So any discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose.
Item number four, Committee on Faculty.
That item is approved.
Sorry, Bill. Uh, item number four, Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration. Item number four A is a resolution to approve the Committee on Faculty Staff and Administration Report. The October C F S A report contains actions entered into the CUNY system of record during the four month period between May one twenty twenty one and August twenty seventh twenty twenty one. The report contains a total of three hundred and sixty four actions, including one hundred and ninety five fellowship leaves, one hundred and three appointments and reappointments with tenure, seventeen separations, and forty eight E C P or Executive Compensation Plan actions.
You have a second for this item.
Second.
Uh, any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number four B is a resolution to amend certain investment options in the City University of New York Optional Retirement Program and Tax-deferred Annuity Plan. The Board of Trustees of the City University of New York established an investment policy statement, an I P S in twenty fourteen, establishing, among other things, guidelines for the university's management of the City University of New York Optional Retirement Program, O R P, and the City University of New York Tax-deferred Annuity Plan. In accordance with the guidelines established under the I P S, and as part of the review process of the array of investments funds within the university plans, the university has been advised by its investment advisor, CAP Trust, to substitute the two existing large cap growth funds, American Beacon Large Cap Growth and Tia Craft Growth and Income with J P Morgan Large Cap Growth Fund in all of the university's plans. The investment option changes recommended by the university investment advisor, CAP Trust, and accepted by the university will be made available for new contributions to the plans and where permitted, participant transfers from the current investment options. In accordance with New York's Education Law, section sixty two fifty one, all investments made available under the O R P will be provided through annuity contracts.
They have a second for this item. Thank you, thank you. Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four C is a resolution to promote Elizabeth Henry to Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs at Queens College effective October twenty sixth twenty twenty one. Elizabeth Henry has served as Provost of Queens College since twenty fifteen, who previously served as Interim Provost from twenty thirteen to twenty fifteen. As a Chief Academic Officer, Dr. Henry has functioned as a member of the Senior Executive Management Team and provided academic leadership of the college's four divisions, arts and humanities, mathematics and the natural sciences, the social sciences, and education. Dr. Henry began her administrative career as Deputy Chair in the Queens College Department of Economics and ultimately served four years as Chair. Dr. Henry was promoted to Dean of Social Sciences from two thousand and five to twenty twelve, and Acting Chief Operating Officer and V P for Strategic Planning and Enrollment Management from twenty twelve to twenty thirteen. Dr. Henry has an A B degree, cum laude, from Princeton University, an M A in economics from Duke University, and a P H D in economics from Duke University. In recognition of Dr. Henry's dedicated service to Queens College, the president of Queens College would like to recognize her service by promoting her to Senior Vice President consistent with the title held by her colleagues at other senior colleges.
They have a second for this item.
Second.
Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four D is a resolution to appoint Steve Everett as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs at the CUNY Graduate Center at the salary of two hundred and ninety five thousand dollars, effective October twenty sixth twenty twenty one. Dr. Steve Everett served as Provost and Executive Vice President at Adelphi University from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty one. As Dean of the College of Architecture, Design, and the Arts at the University of Illinois at Chicago from twenty, excuse me, twenty thirteen to twenty eighteen, as Assistant Vice Provost for Faculty Affairs at Emory University from twenty eleven to twenty thirteen, and as President of the University Senate and Chair of the Faculty Council at Emory from two thousand and nine to two thousand and eleven. Dr. Everett has over forty years of experience in faculty and academic administrative appointments at public and private institutions of higher education and has expertise in strategic planning, faculty and student development, cross campus partnerships, and crisis management. Dr. Everett's selection as Provost and Senior Vice President for Academic Affairs is a result of a nationwide search. Dr. Everett is an accomplished scholar, composer, excuse me, an artist who holds a D M A in music composition from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign, and master's degrees in music theory and trumpet performance, and a bachelor's degree in music history and literature from Florida State University. You're muted, Bill.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
We'll now vote. Oh, is there any discussion on this item?
Uh, Burke, discussion?
Yes.
If I can uh speak on behalf of my colleagues and doctoral faculty, and especially the doctoral faculty policy committee. Uh, we're delighted to have Steve Everett with us already. And I strongly recommend, on behalf of eighteen hundred members of the doctoral faculty, that you support and support.
Thank you, Martin. Any other comments? Discussion? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four E is a resolution to appoint Erwin Wong as Provost and Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs at the Borough of Manhattan Community College at an annual salary of two hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and ninety five dollars, effective October twenty sixth twenty twenty one. Erwin Wong has served as, excuse me, Acting Provost and Senior Vice President at the Borough of Manhattan Community College, B M C C, since twenty eighteen. Dr. Wong was the B M C C Dean for Academic Programs and Instruction from two thousand and four to twenty eighteen, where his responsibilities included CUNY proficiency exam initiatives and activities, distance learning, administrative and academic support services for the college's Uptown Extension Center, Registrar's Office, Office of Instructional Testing, and Transfer and Academic Advisory Center. Dr. Wong was selected with a search waiver. Dr. Wong has a B A in English from Brooklyn College, an M A in English from the State University of New York at Stony Brook, and a P H D in English from SUNY at Stony Brook.
They have a second for this item.
Second, you look hard.
Any discussion or questions on the item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's.
Item number four F is a resolution to name the Joseph Carey and Rosa Inez Vera Journalism Scholarship Fund at the CUNY Craig Newmark Graduate School of Journalism. You're muted.
Just leaving myself on here. May I have a second for this item?
Second, Alasia.
Any discussion on the item or question? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose.
You muted again for some reason.
Oh, it's clicking in on its own. That's.
I know. It's got a mind of its own there.
Great, man. That item is approved.
Item four G is a resolution to name the Arnold and Augusta Newman Fund for Photography Students at Fiorello H LaGuardia Community College.
May I have a second for this item?
Burger.
Any discussion on the item or questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That I approved.
Item four H is a resolution to name the Jeremy Travis Conference Room at John Jay College of Criminal Justice.
They have second for this item.
Burger second.
So any discussion on this item or any questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four I is a resolution to name, excuse me, the Dr. Nazri Michelin Memorial Endowment at Eugenio Maria de Osto's Community College.
They have a second for this item.
Burger second.
Any discussion or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four J is a resolution to appoint Dr. Kevin Nadal as distinguished professor at John Jay College of Criminal Justice of the City University of New York. Dr. Kevin Nadal is a nationally recognized psychologist who is an expert in microaggressions on racial and ethnic minorities and L G B T Q people. He published seven single authored books, as well as three co-authored books, over forty journal articles, and fifty five book chapters. Dr. Nadal has received twelve professional honors and has been awarded multiple grants, including a research grant from the Rise for Boys and Men of Color and a programming grant from the Annie Annie E. Casey Foundation.
We have a second for this item.
Second.
Any discussion or questions on this? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item four K is a resolution to award the Bukhari Sawadogo with early tenure at the City College of New York with an application of bylaw six point C point two. Dr. Bukhari Sawadogo has served as Assistant Professor in the Department of Media Communication Arts at the City College of New York since twenty fifteen and is a highly prized, I'm sorry, and is highly prized by the entire academic community of City College. Dr. Sawadogo is one of the leading global scholars of his generation of African film and media. He's the author of three books published since joining the City College faculty, with a fourth under contract and another being research, and has published numerous articles in reference in reference journals, edited volumes, is active as a curator, public speaker, and jurist in film festivals. Dr. Sawadogo's record at City College is exemplary, having designed and taught four new courses that are cross listed with Black Studies, broadening and deepening the commitment of both faculties to the study of Africa and its incorporation more effectively into the intellectual life of the college.
They have a second for this item.
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved.
Item four L is a resolution to confer the title of Dean Emeritus on John Mogalescu. John Mogalescu served as founding dean of the CUNY School of Professional Studies, CUNY S V S, since its inception in two thousand and three, and under his leadership, CUNY S V S has become one of the university's fastest growing institutions and is now ranked eighth in the nation by U S News and World Report in its twenty twenty one list of best online bachelor's degree programs, placing it in the top two percent of the three hundred and fifty seven institutions that were ranked. Mr. Mogalescu honorably retired in August twenty twenty one after over almost fifty years of service to the university, including thirty four years in the Office of Academic Affairs, most recently as senior university dean from nineteen ninety nine to twenty twenty. Developing programs has served over hundreds of thousands of students. The emeritus title is automatically conferred on college presidents and deans who honorably retire from the university after ten or more years of service in the title. Mr. Mogalescu's retirement from the R F CUNY after almost twenty years as dean of CUNY S V S merits dean emeritus status.
May I have a second for this item?
I second.
Any discussion on the item? Chancellor?
Just want to add my enthusiastic support. Um, if if John had not been an R F employee, he would have been Dean Emeritus twice or three or four times given his service. So uh I'm delighted that that the board saw the the. uh, I'm delighted that, that the board saw the, the, the need to do this and support it entirely. It's a great tribute to the great service at John Day for this university.
And I would echo that great service that he provided. Um, any other discussion on this item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number five, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item number five A is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment to extend the term for Gutman Community College's lease. In order to provide the university with additional time to locate, plan, and build out a permanent location for Gutman, the university will be renewing Gutman's current lease for the entire building at 50 West 40th Street for an additional 42-month term to commence on January 1, 2023, and expire on June 30, 2027. The annual base rent will be $5,687,500, or $473,000, uh, $473,958.33 a month, or $62.50 for the rentable square feet. Uh, with 2% annual increases thereafter, the university has also been able to take advantage of the current depressed rental market conditions, and will be paying nearly $114,000 a month less.
May I have a second for this item?
Over thousand seconds.
So any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item 5B is a resolution to authorize a lease amendment to expand the lease premises for the School of Labor and Urban Studies. The School of Labor and Urban Studies was created as a standalone CUNY institution in 2018. It added significant staff to handle administrative and support functions that had been previously handled by the university center at the graduate center. The crowding of this administrative staff in the current space is profound. In addition, the School of Labor has had a sizable growth in enrollment this past year and projects significant and continuing annual growth for at least the next five years, mostly in the evening. The school currently operates in 30,749,000 rentable square feet. This resolution will authorize the leasing of an additional 15,212 rentable square feet on the 14th floor to alleviate many of the challenges the school faces due to the rapid growth in enrollment faculty and staff. This is almost a 50% increase from the current space. The base rent for the additional premises for years one to year five is $882,296 annually, or $73,524.67 monthly, or, uh, $58 rentable square foot. And year six to the expiration date on September 30 to 2031 is a total, uh, annual amount of $973,568,000, sorry, tripping over my own words, annually, or $81,130.67 monthly, or $64 for each rentable square foot.
May I have a second for this item?
Over thousand seconds.
Any discussion on this item or questions? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number 5C is a resolution to authorize renovations of the Firehouse Building at the City College of New York. The City College Firehouse is an off-campus building that originally served as an FDNY fire station, and is currently underutilized as maintenance storage. The City College's Master of Fine Arts program is in various inadequate spaces across multiple buildings on campus, and needs consolidated and upgraded facilities. This project will completely modernize the building and provide new studios, classrooms, administrative offices, new energy-efficient HVAC system, a rooftop addition to house critique areas, and student display areas. A new ground-floor gallery space will host community functions and allow collaboration with local Harlem artists. The design of the Firehouse renovations was completed in June 2021. Construction is anticipated to commence by March 2022 and be substantially complete by June 2024. New York State has appropriated capital funding to the City University Construction Fund, CUCF, in an amount not to exceed $14,350,350. New York City has appropriated capital funding to CUCF in an amount not to exceed $3,649,650, making the total funding $18 million.
May I have a second for this item?
Over thousand seconds.
Any discussion or questions on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number 5D is a resolution to authorize phase-one upgrades for the emergency power backup network at Lehman College. The university on behalf and for the benefit of Lehman College desires to upgrade Lehman College's existing emergency generator infrastructure, and to provide increased capacity and provide emergency backup to the new nursing education research and practice center. The project's scope will be divided into two phases. Phase one will increase the emergency generator capacity in the south half of the Lehman College campus, sufficient to support the new nursing building, and consistent with the installation of new, sorry, and consistent with the installation of a new emergency generator, an in-kind replacement of the current 500-kilowatt generator located within the speech and theater building, and related cabling and infrastructure. Phase two will upgrade the emergency generator capacity in the north half of the Lehman College campus, and consist of the installation of a new emergency generator and related cabling and infrastructure. The design of the phase-one upgrades is completed, and the university is ready to proceed to construction, and estimates, estimates that the total cost for the phase-one upgrades will be $13 million. New York State has appropriated capital funding to CUCF for the phase-one upgrades for the full amount.
May I have a second for this item?
Over thousand seconds.
Any discussion or questions on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number six is the Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs. Item number 6A is a resolution to approve amendments to the City University of New York be behavior-related medical withdrawal and re-enrollment policy and procedures codified as 7.09 in the Manual of General Policy effective October 27, 2021. The proposed revisions are being made to the existing medical withdrawal policy, clarifying and streamlining the policy and incorporating legal requirements and best practices. The policy will be renamed the City University of New York Behavior-Related Medical Withdrawal and Re-enrollment Policy and Procedures. This name expresses the subject matter and purpose of the policy in simpler terms. The policy adopts gender-neutral language, ensures compliance with ADA regulations, specifies timeframes, and codifies existing practices.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Is there any discussion or questions on this? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved.
Item number seven, the Executive Committee. Item number seven A, Notice of Action Taken on July 21, 2021 for informational purposes with no vote required. One, Macaulay Honors College appoint Vanessa K. Valdez as interim dean. Two, City University of New York enter into a contract with Applied DNA Clinical Labs LLC for the provision of campus-wide COVID-19 surveillance testing. Item number seven B, Notice of Action Taken September 22, 2021 for informational purposes with no vote required. Item one, City University of New York approve a contract with Gartner, Inc. to provide technical IT consulting services related to the reinvestment and innovation program. Item two, City University of New York authorize acquisition and maintenance support services for licensed Oracle software products. Item three, City University of New York authorize a contract with Microsoft to maintain access to Microsoft products and services. Item four, City University of New York renew the service for 4,000 Wi-Fi T-mobile hotspot devices for students needing broadband internet access in response to the continuing COVID-19 pandemic health emergency. Item five, City University of New York ratify, confirm, and approve the suspension of policies for the Fall 2021 semester regarding the withholding of transcripts and registration for students with a financial hold. And item number six, CUNY School of Medicine at the City College of New York appoint Dr. Carmen Renee Green as dean. Item number eight is a resolution of appreciation for Giovanni Poccon. I will read the reso for the record. Resolution of appreciation Giovanni Poccon. Whereas Giovanni Poccon has elected by her fellow students as chairperson for the University Student Senate, USS, in October 2020, serving a one-year term. And whereas chairperson for USS, Ms. Poccon, served as the only student member of the Board of Trustees, representing the interests of more than 500,000 students. And whereas Ms. Poccon represented CUNY students during one of the most challenging years in the university's history. And whereas Ms. Poccon is a senior honors student attending New York City College of Technology, where she's majoring in law and paralegal studies. And whereas Giovanni Poccon is the first Haitian-American woman to serve as the university's student senate chairperson. And whereas Ms. Poccon also currently serves as a senator of professional studies at the City Tech Student Government Association, working with students and administration to improve professional development opportunities and resources for the city tech student body. And whereas Giovanni Poccon is also a member of the Haitian-American Lawyers Association of New York, all on New York, working with individuals in the legal profession to create access and opportunities for aspiring law students. And whereas Ms. Poccon once said, quote, "I am always seeking to change the status quo as a young woman of color and continue to push myself and others to seek leadership and become change agents in today's society while being unapologetic about who they are. Seeking leadership is about having the intention to leave something better than how you found it," unquote. And whereas the CUNY Board of Trustees applauds Giovanni Poccon for her leadership and advocacy on behalf of CUNY students. And whereas Giovanni Poccon was a valued voice on the Board of Trustees, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York express their sincere thanks and deepest appreciation to Giovanni Poccon for her partnership, determination, devotion, and outstanding service to the City University of New York. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees extends its best wishes for her continued success and all of her future endeavors.
May I have a second for this item?
I would like to second that, and to add that she's been a real talent and a gifted, um, member as a trustee. And, uh, as a member of my community, I just wanted to let her know that she's got places to go and things to do. So I want to, um, just congratulate her for the work that she's done, especially during this pandemic.
I, I think that, uh, as, as we get into vote for this item, there's only, I, I'm, I'm not going to abstain. I'm going to vote on one condition, Giovanni, that, that I'm going to vote yes. There's so many members of the board who haven't had the chance to meet you in person. When we start meeting again in person, you're going to have to come back and say hello to all of us. So I'm going to hold you to that. That is the one proviso, the one condition I'm going to do for my yes vote.
Is that a better chance of energizing baseballers and young voters? If this is about something bigger, about some of the issues that quite frankly draw
Well, if we're making comments, I just want to say how proud I am. Um, uh, we've had some talented, uh, student trustees. And, um, you know, to, to have this brilliant and, and smart young woman be part of our, um, uh, term this year just makes me so proud, and I really appreciate all the work that you've done and the future that you're going to hope.
... trying to steal the
Uh, Chair, can I make a comment?
Sure, but I'm just going to have to say, if, if somebody's not speaking right now, could they mute themselves because we're picking up background noise?
Yes, Chairman, I would like to say, Giovanni, you are not only a star in your own right, and you were the fiercest, strongest advocate. You never forgot who you represented on this board. But I think, I mean, that was, that was, uh, enough to hold you in such high esteem. But I think the part that always impressed me was how you were an excellent negotiator and represented and listened so well that you knew when it was time to step outside your appointed role as the student rep and the advocate to do what was best for the university as a whole. You are an incredible leader. Look forward to working with you. I love your laughter and, um, and I have the gift of getting to know you personally. So look forward to all these great things you're going to do in the future, young woman. I'm proud of you and congratulations. Thank you for your service.
Giovanni. Any other, oh, Sandra, go ahead.
Giovanni, you have made, uh, as a trustee, the inspiration that you have provided, the voice for the students, and the opportunity to see what CUNY's future is ahead of us. So continue what you do and know that you will always be here with the CUNY family, and no doubt that the future for you, uh, is bright. Uh, and thank you for all that you have done.
Other comments?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, trustee Poccon, as the newest or one of the newest members of the board, I just also want to say what, uh, a, uh, how appreciative I am of the guidance and mentorship that you extended to me as I sat next to you at my first board meeting, and it was a, a, a true, a truly collaborative and collegial spirit, and, uh, thank you so much.
Any other comments?
Chairman, I'd like to just say a few words. Giovanni, I mean, from the first moment that you and I had a chance to Zoom throughout the year, you know, we've had a lot of conversations. Um, I was so impressed with Giovanni that I'm launching a nonprofit and asked her to join the board, which she accepted, so. She's going to be busy, so don't all of you else try to take her but, uh, it was so impressive, and your future is so bright, and we're just really excited to see where you go, and we're all here for you. So thank you for your service as well.
Great. Any other comments?
I just want to say thank you. Um, it has been a profound honor of my life to serve on this board, and you all probably don't realize the immense impact it has had on me and my life. Um, for a young black woman as myself, coming from a country of Haiti. My parents are immigrants. They've worked extremely, extremely hard to help me get to where I am, and I know my dad is watching, and my mom is watching. And I just want to say a sincere thank you to my parents and my sister, my family members who have supported me along the way on CUNY. Um, I think this is the epitome of what we do when we believe in our students, and we give young women the opportunity to lead. And this is what it's all about. Um, I am just a product of what the City University is, and I'm living fruition of showing that it is indeed possible. And we have done historic things on the board, and you all know I'm a tough leader, so I will always leave with a charge, even though I won't be that voice on the board anymore. I truly encourage you all to continue in the work that we've done, continue to be bold and to represent our students and fight for them, and everything that we can do to impact the lives of our students. I would like to charge the board to continue to do that. We have done extraordinary things. We've canceled student debt. I mean, we may think, what more can we do? And I think with partnership and listening to one another, we can figure out what we can do. Um, there is no CUNY without the students, and there is no students without CUNY. So it has been a profound honor of a lifetime. I am extraordinarily honored, and I will never forget where I come from. My city, my service to the city of New York is not over. It's actually beginning. And I will always take CUNY wherever I go. So thank you. Thank you very much. I am extremely honored and humbled. Thank you.
Any other comments? Well, with that, uh, we'll now vote. And as I said, you better come back and see us. Uh, please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is unanimously approved. And again, it has been a pleasure. I join my other colleagues. I expect, and I said that to you personally, I expect great things from you. This is the beginning, as you just pointed out. I expect huge and great things from you. So again, congratulations today, Giovanni. We will all miss you. Um, the chancellor has asked the board to consider an additional resolution. I'll ask the secretary to read the resolution for the record, and we'll first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail, please read the resolution.
Item number nine is a resolution to authorize a reduction in tuition charges and a refund of tuition payments for students administratively withdrawn from the Fall 2021 classes due to their failure to comply with the university's policy 7.061 SARS-CoV-2, COVID-19 mandating student vaccination requirements. And the resolution reads as follows, dated October 25, 2021, whereas on May 10, 2021, the New York State governor announced that students of the City University of New York, the university, and the State University of New York will be required to receive the COVID-19 vaccine to attend to attend in-person classes in the fall once the COVID-19 vaccines receive federal approval. And whereas on July sixth, 2021, the University Board of Trustees adopted policy seven point oh six one SARS-CoV-2 COVID-19, the student COVID-19 vaccination policy, mandating that all students registering for fully in-person or hybrid classes for the 2021 fall term must be fully vaccinated against COVID-19 to attend in-person classes and hybrid classes unless they've been granted a medical exemption or religious exemption. And whereas the mandate contained in the student COVID-19 vaccination policy was to become effective upon the licensure by the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, the FDA, of one or more of the COVID-19 vaccines, which at the time of the adoption of the student COVID-19 vaccine policy had only received emergency use authorization. And whereas on October and August twenty-third, 2021, the FDA granted full approval and licensure for general use for the immunization of COVID-19 virus, the Pfizer COVID-19 vaccine, thereby making the student COVID-19 vaccination policy effective. And whereas, as a result of the effectiveness of the student COVID-19 vaccination policy, the university established a forty-five-day final deadline through October seventh, 2021, for university students to become fully vaccinated against COVID-19 and to receive university approval of the vaccination documentation to be provided by students via the university's system of record, CUNY First. And whereas the university administratively withdrew students in fully in-person classes in the fall 2021 semester who did not comply with the deadline for receiving university approval of their COVID-19 vaccination documentation or who did not receive a medical exemption or religious exception from the requirement. And whereas for students in hybrid classes who failed to meet the deadline for receiving university approval of their COVID-19 vaccination documentation before their first-in-class meeting subsequent to October seventh, 2021, for fall 2021, or who did not receive a medical exemption or religious exception, the university will administratively withdraw students from those courses. And whereas in an effort to minimize the financial impact of students' failure to comply with the university's student COVID-19 vaccination policy, the university wishes to provide a reduction of tuition charges and refund of out-of-pocket payments. And whereas such action by the university is consistent with the university's current policy on immunization liability with respect to MMR vaccination, measles, mumps, and rubella, as per the university's Tuition and Fee Manual, which provides that any student, quote, that any student who does not comply with the immunization policy and as a result has his or her registration canceled, will receive a tuition refund, unquote. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approves the reduction of tuition charges in the form of a financial waiver for those students administratively withdrawn from fall 2021 semester classes due to their failure to comply with the university's student COVID-19 vaccination policy. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the refund of tuition payments made by those students administratively withdrawn from fall 2021 semester classes due to their failure to comply with the university's student COVID-19 vaccination policy. And be it further resolved that the amount of the financial waiver is equal to the tuition charges for the classes administratively withdrawn from and that is expected to have been covered by student out-of-pocket payments unless the withdrawal has no impact on the tuition charges. And be it further resolved that the amount of the tuition refund for each student affected will be equal to the out-of-pocket tuition payment made by those students related to the administratively withdrawn classes unless the withdrawal has no impact on tuition charges. The explanation reads as follows. Affected students' tuition charges will be reduced by the tuition bill for the classes that the student was administratively withdrawn from. A financial waiver will be applied to the CUNY First account for students whose administratively withdrawn class is expected to be or has been out-of-pocket by the student. Similarly, student tuition will be refunded by the amount of tuition that was paid out-of-pocket for the classes that they were administratively withdrawn from. In both situations, if the withdrawal has no financial impact on tuition charges, then neither the waiver nor refund will be applied. Separate coding will be established in CUNY First to track the amounts of tuition financially waived and refunded as a result of this resolution. That's it, Bill.
Okay, I make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda. May I have a second?
For a second.
Okay, item number nine has been added. I now present item number nine. May I have a second for that?
For a second.
Is there any discussion or questions on the item? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Uh, there being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn this or I make a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Again.
All right. Thank you all so much. We are adjourned. Everybody stay safe.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care.